Work with common council on Monday, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, May the 4th. And if you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing and Jim Robinson from Greenwood Christian Church will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's great.
Father, I come tonight to pray for those who provide leadership and guidance of the governance of this city. I thank you for each, I thank you for how you have blessed them with their skills, administration, that lead this community. We're grateful for the growth this community has seen. We thank you for the diverse population that we have. We would ask that the leadership will continue to be strong and wise in how they carry themselves and how they lead, being a part of this county. Thank you for tonight's preach. I pray, Father, for not just wisdom for tonight, but how they carry themselves day to day, that they will represent us, their constituency well. Please grant them wisdom, but also peace in their lives and health as they go about their day-to-day responsibilities. We pray for the one who loves us the most.
Thank you. May be seated. Roll call.
Bates.
President.
Campbell.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Billington.
Here.
And Williams.
Here. We have a court. All of you should have received copies of the minutes for our last regular meeting of April the 18th. Do I have a motion by someone? Motion Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Lexi. I think I heard him first. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing an enroll call in the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Minutes are approved on a vote of eight to zero with one abstention. Reports, corporation counsel.
Yeah, I did some of my monthly as the Chair for me. If you have any questions, please contact over at the summit.
Any thing from the Controller at this time?
Not for sure.
Any other committee or board reports?
Yes, Mr. President, the advisory commission did meet last week. There's three items, new business. Let's see, landscape waiver, pesky landscape waiver, and a Ditten Floyd article for primary plan. All these were approved unanimously.
All right, thank you. All right, any other committee or board reports? Right, this is the opportunity to set aside for members of the public to address the council concerning, there any comments about items that are on tonight's agenda? There is a five-minute time limit and per person, so if you're here tonight or online, wish to address the council concerning an item that is on the agenda, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or speak up online. All right, hearing none, then moving on to ordinances and resolutions. There are none under notice and intent to consider under first reading, resolution 2205.
A resolution declaring certain areas within the city of Greenwood, an economic revitalization area, and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax payment and setting the time and place for a public hearing. For 1173 Airport Parkway LLC, three buildings, A, B, and C, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Do I have a motion? Motion Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Foster. Any questions?
I have more of a comment and question.
Okay.
I don't normally vote for this type of also, but I do understand that when the presentation was given, there was a crime that majority tenants waited for the first building, and also that the developers are investing billions of dollars of financing into these projects. Therefore, I'll be supportive of this resolution.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing an enroll call, resolution 2205, first reading.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye. Resolution 2205 passes, first reading nine zero. Resolution 2206.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of City of Greenwood, Indiana redevelopment district tax implement revenue bonds of 2022, force-filled road sports park project for the purpose of providing funds to be applied for the cost of public infrastructure projects, incidental expenses in connection therewith, and paying the costs and expenses arising from the issuance of such bonds, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Williams, second. Second by Mr. Hopper. And any questions, comments? All right, hearing none, enroll call, resolution 2206, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
I'm staying.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
Resolution 2206 passes first reading eight to zero with one abstention. Second reading, there are none, new business introduction and new ordinances and resolutions, resolution number 2207.
A resolution of agreement common council to adopt a written fiscal plan for the annexation of approximately 294.9 acres, located either side of Five Points Road north of Main Street, extending the county line road, referencing annexation ordinance number 2008, sponsored by Bates.
Hello, common council. My name is Gabe Nelson. For those who don't know me yet, I am the new planning director for the city. With every annexation that we have, we need to prepare a fiscal plan to demonstrate our ability to take in the additional land. Resolution number 22-07 pertains to the fiscal report for proposed annexation located on either side of Five Points Road and between Main Street and County Line Road. Page 24 in the fiscal report shows that estimated balances for the four years. You'll see that the estimates are minimal for our amounts for paying to taxes, schools, city services, and libraries. This is because the annexation is coming in as agricultural, and there are only two residents on the property, on the 295 acre property. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, any questions? All right, thank you. Resolution 2208.
A resolution, amending resolution number 92.2. A resolution joining with mayor in establishing a city policy for clients with the Americans with Disabilities Act and addressing related matters to appoint the current city engineer as the ADA coordinator, sponsored by Foster.
Anybody want to talk about this one? All right, ordinance 2208.
An ordinance annexing certain territory contiguous to the city of Greenwood, Indiana, placing it within the corporate boundaries and making it a part of the city of Greenwood, and redefining the corporate boundaries of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, to include approximately 294 acres located south of East County Line Road and east of North Five Points Road, with various owners, sponsored by Bates.
Great. Anybody want to talk about this one? Gabe, would you like to say something?
I sure can. This will still need to go to plan commission for their recommendation. Due to the timeline, it is being introduced to you ahead of plan commission. As I mentioned before, this is for an agricultural reason.
And this is scheduled for a public hearing tonight, so we will open up for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2208? Step forward, state your name and address for the record to the podium, and if you're online, just speak up. Anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2208? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Any further discussion or questions from the council? All right, moving on, ordinance number 2209.
An ordinance amending chapter two, article nine, section two dash nine three of Greenwood Municipal Code 1993 to add cash change funds to the field house, sponsored by Bates, Foster, and Gibson.
That's right.
Evening, Greg Wright, City Controller. This basically is similar to what we had at the community center or Freedom Springs to allow the field house to have cash for making change on site. It does require us to amend the municipal code in order to do so. Also asking that you would allow us to suspend the rules through second reading. As you're probably well aware, our grand opening is going to be this Friday, so we would like to get this in place for them.
Right, so motion to suspend the rules through first reading, somebody? Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on suspension through first reading? Hearing none, enroll call, suspension of the rules through first reading of ordinance 2209.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
All right, rules are suspended, we'll vote nine to zero. Do I have a motion for the first reading? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Foster. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, enroll call, ordinance 2209, first reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Order 2209 passes first reading nine to zero. Do I have a motion for suspension through second reading? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
By Mr. Foster. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, enroll call, suspension of the rules through second reading, ordinance 2209.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Rules are suspended on a unanimous vote, nine to zero, through second reading. Motion on second reading. Motion by Ms. Gibson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Foster. Any discussion? Hearing none, enroll call, ordinance 2209, second reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Order 2209 passes second reading nine zero.
Thank you. Hope to see everybody on Friday.
All right, ordinance number 2210.
An ordinance, ordinance making padded variable width parking easement reference and subpat for Greenwood Springs commercial subdivision, block two, lot seven, sponsored by Campbell.
All right. Moving on, ordinance 2211.
An ordinance amending the Greenwood Municipal Code 1993, as amended, chapter two, city administration, article ten, miscellaneous provisions, section two dash one twenty-one, Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA policy statement, to change the ADA coordinator, sponsored by Foster.
Anyone want to talk about that? All right, moving on, miscellaneous business. This is a second opportunity for members of the public to address the council, this time concerning items that are not on the agenda. So if you'd like to do so, if you're here, please step to the podium. If you're online, speak up and state your name and address for the record. All right, hearing none, then moving on, miscellaneous business from the council, we'll start with the CF ones. They, I believe, the first one is Greenwood Practice. We have someone here from Greenwood Practice, so.
And Mr. Stone is also present online as a member of the tax.
Okay, and Mr. Stone is online. If we have any questions who could help, he can help answer for us.
Hi, my name is Frank Williams. I'm a president of Greenwood Practice LLC, a part of the partners of the company incorporated. Passing around paper, there's a lot of numbers and other physical purposes, and so I got numbers in front of me. So I guess I'm here to inundate the waters of our CF one. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to do that, but I'm here.
Horrible, sir.
So, I think in the year, four, five years ago, as we started building process, we've been in our building for about three and a half years. When we moved from our previous location to this location, it's on County Line Road to Airport Parkway, at that time, we had, to my recollection, sixteen employees that were at that office on a routine basis. Our CF one center, current number of employees was thirty-three. I'm not sure where that number came from. We had additional seven part-time persons there, where they put us at twenty-three. You might say part-time, those are people who are there one day a week or less. And then, so we moved to sixteen people to practice. We added additional practices, people to practice, I'll get you that in a second. And then there's a number of retained employees. I think for the, for the, my understanding, talking to a family, was that the number of current employees, number of retained employees, and number of additional employees was going to add up to a hundred and something, and we certainly did not add that number of employees. The number of retained employees, I think this is where there may be a problem in the definition of what a retained employee is or what we're counting as a retained employee. We counted the people who moved, as well as we moved our practice, our business practice, from the North Side Indianapolis down here. And so, all those, we considered both retained employees, they did practice, still do the practice. And then there was an estimated thirteen additional employees that we would gain. So when you look at the number of retained employees, if we really had twenty-three, we think there was twenty-eight that we moved down here, which would make fifty-one, not sixty-one for that, that number of retained employees. Now, walked around the office today, counted employees. We currently have thirty-two clinical employees at our practice. We have sixteen forward to thirty-two. We have, we are currently at, we're actively looking for additional dermatologists, but dermatologists are rare. And so, we'll see if that, how that works out. We have additional four part-time persons, again, those are people that work one day a week there. We moved our clinical office, that included management, phone room operators, and billing. That number takes twenty-two. I assume in the number twenty-eight, twenty-two was, I don't know the number twenty-eight, where it came from. I assume that it's the same type of people. The longer the shorter of it is, I think if you take this, the sixteen that we had, or twenty-three, you could part-time, and you say the retained employees is supposedly twenty-eight down there, that gets us to fifty-one. We're currently at fifty-four employees, fifty-eight include the part-time. We, we will probably get up to our suggested thirteen additional employees. We hired another doctor, with that comes three additional medical assistants, another person's phone room. So we, we have not, we anticipated, we added doctors, that we would have other needs and billing for every doctor we have. We had one of those first, for every two doctors we have, we had phone room. But in the last two years, we have done some office efficiency things, such as online scheduling, online bill pay, online check-in. And we've eliminated, we've done automatic scanning. So we've eliminated some jobs overall, where we're up from where we were because of the number of clinical people, but I think from the, from the business side of the battle a bit, I think I probably muddied the waters more than I already muddied, but I guess I, I open to any questions I'll try to answer. I can confess I was not the one that filled out the CF ones. The two people that did it, our HR person and our practice manager, both quit during the pandemic. So I've tried my best to answer the questions, if I have.
All right, thank you for coming in. Any questions from the council? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, any motion on Greenwood Practice?
Before we dive in and go through the entire list, since Adam's online, I wonder if Adam has analyzed our list numbers three through, I think it's eleven. I think this is the.
They're on the same address.
Yeah, this is the project where they might have submitted, they applied initially as one project, but now they separated. Has somebody been through these numbers, Adam? Do they make sense to everybody?
Go ahead, Adam.
Adam?
Yeah, hey, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, Councilman Leskey, you're correct. That, that cohort is, the way that it was really administered at the county, three through eleven, there's effectively nine separate CF ones. There's ultimately, the number three is, think of that as the aggregation or the consolidation of all eight suites at that property. So the other way to say it is that the council, when that incentive agreement was initially approved, it was at the building level, and then ultimately, that building was subdivided into eight separate suites. Each one of those suites is actually its own tax ID. So each one has, for the county, has to file its own CF one, even though it's really one-eighth of the total building incentive. So you are correct. Item number three is really what I would encourage you to look at as far as how the building at large is performing to the original metrics. And the items four through eleven are the individual suites that essentially roll up. We have ensured that those total correctly. The other, the other items that I would, I would point out today is with relative to number one, Greenwood Practice, from a committee perspective, certainly, the doctor and his staff have coordinated and been communicated throughout the process. We just took note of the job count, so while they had overperformed on the investment and the salaries, the, the job count was off relative, as he mentioned. So from a committee's perspective, that was one that we wanted to make sure to flag. But everything else, items two through fifteen, have passed the committee's review. Happy to answer any other questions. Thank you.
All right. Does that answer?
Yeah, that's exactly what I hoped to hear.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on? All right, we entertain a motion to Greenwood Practice.
So I guess the question then becomes, in 2017, had we known that there were thirty-three jobs? What, ninety-four jobs is reported on the thirty-three current, sixty-one retained, plus thirteen original, would we have still done the deal, I guess, would be the question.
Do you have a CF one for Greenwood Practice, Andy? Did you mic or ask that they?
Yep, I can, I can pull it up. Do you want me to share, share it on the screen?
Or can you just confirm that they promised salaries, they promised 2.5 million, and they're actual 5.2 million?
Well, the original was thirty-three current employees at 4.8 million, plus another sixty-one retained at 5.9 million, plus thirteen additional employees at 830,900. That was the original deal. So we're not by a number of like sixty jobs, but 4.8, plus salaries. How long, how many years was there?
Ten, so we're four.
Well, 2018 or probably, I think it's 2019, first year.
This is the second year according to the chart.
So here, here were the original SB one council commitments. I believe I've got the correct one up here with all the different property cards. And then here, they're in effectively year two of, of the, of the approved abatement period. So the total, total committed jobs on the SB one was, I believe, sixty-four. Total salaries with a development cost of 2.45. So they've, according to what we've seen here, they've, they've shown that they've at least invested the, at the cost. It was just, we took note of the, the number of new, new jobs, and the salaries did come in, did come in a bit, bit higher. So hope that answers your question.
Not from the original. Adam, you're saying that the original SB one said that there would be a total of sixty-four jobs at 2.5 million? Approximately, is that correct?
That, approximately, yeah, I think, I think that's correct.
You were talking about the salaries.
And they're right now reporting fifty-three jobs at 5.2 million. Is that correct?
Yep, yep.
So the salary is one of the water, that you were there and got here before. Adam, the original SB one, the actual form shows a much higher salary of 2.5.
I'm just going back and looking at the August seventeenth, August 2017 meeting. August seventh, 2017. Anyway, I don't want to spend all day on it, but when do we have to make a decision?
I believe before May fifteenth.
So before next week.
Oh.
Yep, I can hear you.
All right, Adam, you were comfortable?
Am I comfortable with, with the, moving forward as favorable or substantially compliant?
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I think that, that's your all the call. You know, I think we just wanted to raise it as a committee. I think we just wanted to raise it that, that job.
A little buck passer you.
Good answer, Adam.
Yeah. I think some, overall salary numbers, substantially compliant.
Like, do we have confirmation that that's the correct number based on what Hopper's saying here for the original SB one?
Well, the committee put together this chart. That's the numbers they came up with. And as far as what was the original commitment, so I'll have to go with them on that.
But Hopper has the original SB one, because they'll remember.
The original SB one is attached.
Even if the original SB one showed six.
No, this has to be, has to be one here. Not the original.
What's it show, then, six million or five million?
Chairman, I want to get this, go ahead and get this on the floor. Approved Greenwood Practice, two PRs, seventeen, that two eight hundred and fifty-five, substantial. Approved Greenwood Practice, CPR seventeen dash two eight hundred and sixty-five, substantial compliance.
I second that.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Bates, a second by Mr. Lexi, finding substantial compliance, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Passes on a vote of nine or eight to one. Next.
Off my point, error sheet metal real property resolution fourteen fifteen, substantial compliance.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
By Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passage unanimously.
I'll find CLP O A real property resolution sixteen sixteen.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second. By Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
I'll find J T Properties, Real Property Resolution sixteen sixteen, substantial compliance.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, passage unanimously.
I'll find A M B Real Estate, Real Property Resolution sixteen sixteen, substantial compliance.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
I will find K C H Investments, Real Property Resolution sixteen sixteen. Exactly the same. Forty-six point three and substantial compliance.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
Same resolution. One point four. One point three and two point four. Two units.
They must have, they must have.
Unit D and unit. C, yeah. Yeah. Casey, I'll find K C H Investments, Real Property Resolution sixteen sixteen, which I think is unit D for the number seven.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
I will find A W P Holdings, Real Property Resolution sixteen sixteen, unit, uh, suite, unit E.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
Now, these are both the same units.
There's an F.
Oh, one's F.
One's F, yes. E and F.
What did I just do, P? Did we do number eight there?
Yeah.
We have a little minute, where I remember I called, I'll find I W P Holdings, Real Property Resolution sixteen sixteen.
Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
I will find A M B Real Estate, Real Property Resolution sixteen sixteen. Unit G to be eighteen.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
I'll find A B Real Estate, Real Property Resolution sixteen sixteen, unit H.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
Find pointer sheet metal. Personal property, resolution two eighty.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
Find scale properties number five seventeen.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
Find scale properties number five two nine, Real Property Resolution one thirteen.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously.
Find scale properties number five seventeen, Real Property Resolution one thirteen.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passage unanimously. Thank you. Any other miscellaneous business from the council?
Chairman, I have one, I'm trying to find out more information about something that might be affecting Greenwood, may not. Think in March, the county denies, let's see, the five G tower request. For, I think, incorporated parts of White River Township. My question is, does anybody know if that's, if something that's been introduced to Greenwood or already have that? Anything in the works going on at the place?
They've already built, pretty much every single one of them, they've already got all the.
So, did we have anything to do with that?
We had a neighborhood, District Three challenge location, and when I tried to bring it up, said that we had no, those were pretty much concerned where they were going. Obviously, the county found a way to do it, that's interesting, but, um, that's what I was told at the time. So, we have the authorities to do that? That'd be a great question for the public engineering, like, could we, something? Yep.
Yeah, we'll check into that.
Appreciate it. That's all, anyone?
Alright. Anything else from the council? Alright, miscellaneous business corporation council.
Nothing further.
Controller.
Just to remind everybody, financials are available on the website, but we can't find it, it's part of the.
Alright, the mayor's office. Alright, hearing nothing, and we will adjourn this meeting, thank you all.